Two building BPT presentations tonight. The first one is Main Street. So Dawn, we welcome you and your team up for your presentation.
Good evening, board members. I'm Dawn Hussein, the principal at the Early Education Program. And tonight I have with me Nicole Kowanis, who is a teacher at Main Street, also our BPT chairperson, and also finishing her administrative internship this summer, doing her second summer at Main Street. So Nicole will be doing the presentation tonight.
Hello. Welcome to Main Street. Main Street was established by Dr. Warren Grund and his small staff in 1980. It was initially housed in the Bessie Reardon School in Mattydale. Currently, we're located in North Syracuse on Route 11. We have 305 preschool students between the ages of three and five years old. 153 of those students are preschoolers with a disability, while the other 152 students are preschoolers without a disability. We have 12 classrooms. There are five full-day classrooms and seven half-day classrooms, giving us 14 half-day sections. We currently have 11 different school districts within our building, and we have 75% of those students are North Syracuse residents. Currently, our staff consists of 12 teachers, 27 full-time teaching assistants. There are 12 part-time teaching assistants, which work three days a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. Our therapy team consists of five speech therapists, three occupational therapists, and two physical therapists. We have one teacher of the visually impaired, which we share, two school psychologists. Our nursing staff includes one registered nurse and one LPN. Our office staff includes five and a half staff members, and we have three custodians. Our revenue sources are a little bit different from other buildings. We receive a lot of our revenue from state and county aid and grants. And this is just a quick breakdown of the revenue that we do receive. The district's mission and goals have assisted Main Street in creating our building goals. We currently have three building goals. Goal number one, all students will demonstrate measurable progress in developmental skills. Goal number two, parents and staff will collaborate to strengthen a positive school culture. And goal number three, staff will move towards standards reference and standards-based planning and instruction. There are three pictures illustrated below. The picture to the far left is a student that is working with the Zones of Regulation. She created a visual to illustrate that she was happy that day. The picture in the middle and to the right are students working on handwriting without tiers. The middle picture, the students are working on the Handwriting Without Tiers workbooks. And the students to the right are using the lines and curves to make the letter U, which they were learning about that day. Students will engage in activities that encourage independence with a daily routine as shown above, and they will participate in facilitated play to promote positive social interactions. Well, still looking at goal number one, they experience learning through self-directed, developmentally appropriate activities, including collaboration, communication, and problem-solving skills. The students also participate in the Speed Dial, which we give three times a year. We give the full assessment in September and the full assessment in June, and we give a benchmark in January. Some strategies that we use to address these goals are the New York State Pre-Kinergarden Foundation for the Common Core. We use the High Scope Curriculum, the Speed Dial 4, handwriting without tiers, and the Zones of Regulation. This is a graph from our Speed Dial results from last year in 2015 and 2016. The state had asked us to complete a five-year study using a standardized assessment, and we chose to use the Speed Dial 4 tool. So these are results from the fourth year. This year, we're on the fifth year of using the Speed Dial. This graph illustrates the total score, the standard score, and the percentile rank. The blue illustrates scores from September 2015, while the green illustrates scores from 2016 in June. What the graph doesn't necessarily illustrate, but we've seen through other graphs using the Speed Dial, is that students with disabilities are performing at the same rate, if not higher rate, than the students that are not receiving the special ed services. Well, looking at goal number two, we share information with families and staff through Coffee Connections. We talk about topics such as handwriting without tiers, Zones of Regulations, and multiple other topics that parents can also use to collaborate with their students at home. We also provide multiple approaches for parent contact. And we continue to explore technology through integration. This year, we did receive a SMARTboard through a grant. We use the SMARTboard for 12 classrooms, and this helps our students to interact with the curriculum in a different and new, improved way. Goal number three, our staff will move towards standards reference and standards-based planning and instruction. We do this through integrating through the High Scope Curriculum with the pre-kinergarden Common Core Curriculum. We use iKen Statements, which are displayed in all classrooms across the building. We incorporate standards into team planning and parent communication. We continue to use handwriting without tiers and Zones of Regulation in all classrooms. And we schedule time for collaboration and communication around the standards and goals through professional learning communities. This is just a brief little illustration of the supports that we have at Main Street. We are supported through the Friends of North Syracuse and the PTO. Just to break this down a little bit, the picture on the far left is the photo booth picture from the Family Fun Fest, which the PTO provides every year. The picture to the right of that is a class at the Pumpkin Patch. And then the students next week will be attending Cookies with Santa, which the PTO also puts on. The picture to the right is the ribbon cutting ceremony. We received a playground through a grant. We received equipment, so that was an addition to our current playground. Friends of North Syracuse bought us two water fountains, which is a new addition to our school. And the bottom two pictures is a literacy night picture, and then the picture to the right is entertainment that the PTO provided during School Spirit Week. Our next step as a BPT is to establish a mission and vision for our school through work with the building planning team and Main Street community. We like to share and analyze data through the use of the professional learning communities and the Speed Dial results. And we like to increase professional development opportunities for staff within building-based meetings through teacher meetings, speech meetings, occupational therapist meetings. We want to provide some extra professional development. Are there any questions?
Can you go back to the chart on the scores? I don't understand. What's the difference between the total score?
Sure.
I'm not familiar with the file for.
Okay. So the total score adds up all of these scores. So in each section, you would rank how much the student was able to answer. And then you take that score and you go back into the manual and you rank it based on the standard score. So that gives you, it breaks it down into a different score.
So they're adding up like just a total number? One, can you hear me? Okay. So equal growth percent from the total score to the standard score because total points, and then the standard score is a formula that includes the student's age. Yeah, exactly. Right.
What is a Speed Dial test? Tell me about it.
Yep.
I was curious, I couldn't figure it out.
The Speed Dial is a standardized assessment. I don't know if you've ever heard of tests such as the Bracken or tests such as that. So it tests cognitive skills such as, you know, can the students identify letters and numbers receptively and expressively? Can they answer functional questions such as, you know, this is a key, what is a key used for? Are they able to skip? Are they able to stand on one foot? Basically, it helps to identify if they're in need of academic support or if they are right now in the like okay range.
Let me just say that the Dial stands for the developmental indicators for the assessment of learning. And the Speed just meaning it's a shorter version of the test, so there's a test that's the full version, but we use the Speed version, which is supposed to be about a 20-minute assessment.
So it's not really, it's not a timed test even though it sounds that way?
And let me just say that when I first started at Main Street, we had gone to Albany and had some assessment tools that we were using within the building, but they weren't standardized. So Albany wouldn't recognize our results because they wanted to see standardized assessments. So we're actually in year five now of using this assessment. And while we don't feel like it tests everything that we'd like it to test, our school psychologist really felt like it was the best assessment that was available for preschool-aged children and also for children on a wide age range. So we often have children that start with us when they're two and a half, and so some assessments don't go that low in age. So it covered the widest age range as well. So that's why we selected this test.
Dawn, are you able to give feedback on the?
Are we able to give assess?
Feedback on the assessment tools?
To the, to the people that make the test?
Make the test.
I'm not sure that we're able to do that necessarily, but now that we are at the end of that five years, we are going to be kind of just re-canvassing again to see if there's a new and improved assessment that might be better out there. We have reported back to the state each year to let them know how we're doing. Originally, when we talked to the state about doing this kind of testing, we, the vision was to get money from the state in order to compare ourselves to related service providers to see if it was more beneficial, to prove really that it was more beneficial to have students in a program than just receiving related services. So since we didn't receive additional funding to do that kind of study, we just stayed the course with, you know, being consistent with testing our own children to be sure that we were seeing was consistent.
I just want to thank you for all the hard work you do over at Main Street. Proud of the work you do.
Thanks, Mary. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
I just have one question. I know last-
I can't see you in that. I'm sorry. I feel kind of rude.
I know last year Kate started the Coffee Connection. How's that going? Is it still a good venue?
Yes, it's still going well. Actually, this week we'll have one that's based on fine motor development, and so it's been received well by the parents. Of course, we'd always like to get more attendance at them, but they're also open to our district's staff as well, so they can earn professional development credits for coming to those kinds of things. So it's beneficial for both our parents and our staff members as well.
Okay. So you've got kids that are two, three, four years old. You need to, you need to remember that what you guys are doing now is a plan for the future. Because I've got kids, I've got one kid in college that I'm indebted to your school for making her the person she should be and progressing her the way she needed to be. And I am indebted to you.
Thank you.
Thank you both.
Thank you.
We'll move on to our next BPT presentation. Dave from Allen Road will be here with his team.
Good evening, and as always, thank you for the opportunity to share with you. It's great to have a chance to kind of revisit and show you what we're doing. All right, I guess my role at the beginning of the presentation before I hand it off to these lovely ladies to share about the building is really kind of put our plan in context for you. With me tonight is Kelly Guthrie, who's one of our fourth grade teachers, Nicole Henty, who's a second grade teacher, and one of our ENL teachers, one of our three ENL teachers now that we're up. So let me get our slideshow up and try and click and speak at the same. So just some quick demographics for Allen. We're just over 400, typical population for the building. Obviously, is we have as many ENL students now as we do staff members. One, one match. Our free and reduced lunch rate. I've been in Allen Road, or I think in the history of the district that it's been a type of school. So there are definitely some shifts and changes going on in our population. Our goal, which in conversation, Dawn kind of brought this out in one of our meetings, our goal is really to meet students where they are. Obviously, I know it's what all of our jobs are, but that's really where our goal is focused. What we did was, we explored last year, we're kind of looking back to shape our goals. What you're going to see, we'll share a little bit of data with you, but primarily, we took a look at, last year was the end of a three-year set of goals for us, and we started on developing a professional learning community. For us, this was really new work. Kind of put our toes in the water. The data that I want to show you is not just to share our performance, but it's to show you what drove the decision we made. Grade levels and the spots in the building that did the most exploration with this work. That's what led us to the decision to make our goals around this work being building-wide versus just kind of. So we looked at fourth grade state test names web data. Fourth grade state test, the ELA scores have been something we've been focusing on for a while, for a number of years. It's always been kind of a. And it's been a steady increase. If you look at what our actual was in 2015, then we set a goal 3% higher in 2016. At our actual in 2016, actually, we started 50 and 41%. 2016, 44% was the goal. We actually reached 54%. So not only met, but we exceeded that goal. Ames Web, the same grade level, you can see that we not only set, but exceeded that goal last spring. The reason I mention that is because our fourth grade team was the first team to kind of jump on this year, meet on a weekly basis, do our NITE blocks five days a week, and they really, four new folks at that grade building too from other grade levels, and they really jumped in completely into that work. And they also had some really strong results. What you see here is the Ames Web transition report, and the reason why I point out is because the goal in these reports is to have 95% of your students fall in the green and yellow. 85 in the green, 10 in the yellow, and only 5% in your red, which is at risk. Now, we didn't hit the 95, we didn't hit the, I'm sorry, the 85 in the green, but we met and exceeded that for green and yellow combined. By the end of the year, the fourth grade team had their students down to 4%. The time I've seen at Allen Road, they actually have met that. To say what your goal is to hit. Data from first grade. You might say, okay, Dave, why would you show that? That doesn't look too flattering on the surface. Because as you see, the first triangle is the fall baseline testing for Ames Web, and this is for phonemic. Little triangles for the mid-year, and then the third triangle is for the end of the year. The reason I put this one in there is data. Since we had the mid-year testing in Ames Web, the first grade team took a look at the data for phonemic station and said, okay, we're losing kids to the red. Are doing some explicit targeted instruction in this area every day with these students. Second half of the year, they not only made up that ground, but then exceeded that. And again, they weren't, they were so into their schedules by the midway, couldn't do wind blocks the way some of the other grade levels were in rotating students. But they were able to do it within their classrooms, which is what I planned for the district says. So it just showed again that where that model is in place bonded to that, that targeted, explicit, data-driven instruction was effective. Second grade team was another team that said, okay, we weren't planning on it, but we're going to jump in and give this a try. We don't have extra hands on deck, but we're going to do it three days a week. And you can see that their data in Ames Web not only met but exceeded the goal in both reading and in math. And they got it down to below 15% in the red. Steady improvement across the year. So the point to all that is just to show you that the data we use was to drive the fact that this work that we started with and experimented with wanted to adopt building-wide because we saw that it was.
You didn't have extra hands on. Or you will?
With the wind time. Yeah, we'll get there. I wouldn't need you hanging.
Okay, I was hanging. Thank you.
Okay, and our building objectives for this year, our objective is to improve student learning in both math and ELA through the growth of Allen Road as a professional learning community. So we came together as a staff, and we came up with these objectives. And if you notice, there's a TCT there a lot. Let me just tell you what that is. That's our teacher collaboration time, and we use that as part of our PLC. And if you notice, if you look at the district goals and our building objectives, they correlate very strongly together. We had come up with our building objectives and then took a look at the district goals, and we color-coded it to see that, to show you that when you're looking at Allen Road's objectives, they really do match, meet our district goals, and we were pretty proud of that.
So our, another building goal is to improve student learning through the transfer of professional learning into professional practice. And really, our focus is really taking what we've learned and putting it into practice. So when we look at what we've written for our goals, we also noticed that they also closely align with the district goals, but we really pinpointed three. Student engagement, differentiation, and then formative assessment and feedback. That's where we. So during our grade level TCT times in our building, we've opened up the table to a wider range of related service providers and teachers. By doing so, we have time to share ideas and collaborate just beyond the four members of our grade level team. For example, each grade level has a special area teacher that is assigned to their TCT time, and they come once a week with us and meet around the table and bring their ideas. And hopefully, they can bring what we're talking about in our data collection into their areas as well.
Fourth grade team, we were able to come together, re-norm, set our protocols, and created, we created an agenda to help meetings stay focused on discussing student achievement, sharing professional strategies, and creating common assessments.
And during the third grade TCT, we use Chromebooks for our collaboration. One example is that we share teacher resources to everyone in our TCT to use during our third grade wind time, which we'll talk about. And we collect, we also collect data from common assessments, and we're able to do all of this data analysis in real time. So in these pictures above, you can see that we, like other buildings across the district, have adopted that all hands-on-deck approach to create smaller student groupings that are specifically targeted and data-driven. With these smaller groupings, we're able to really zone in and differentiate as much as possible to meet the needs of all students.
For an example, in fourth grade last year, as opposed to just the traditional state test practice, what we did was, we gave a practice state test, and then through our wind time, we were able to target where the skill deficits were for each and every student. We created multiple skill classrooms, and depending on where the students needed more work, that was the wind group that they worked on, and they were able to get their needs met.
Okay. So we'll first start with the ENL, talking about the population, taking a look at the languages that are represented in their building. Our Ls speak 10 different languages and come from 16 different countries. So when we were looking at this pie chart, we were thinking, okay, this is very significant, but, but what, how does this impact our actual practice? So our discussion then led into different modes of instruction, such as integration. If you notice in the two pictures, both of these pictures are in the general ed classroom with ENL teachers and the general ed teacher co-teaching, doing the same contents, doing the same skill, but maybe just having a different task associated with that. So the new regs indicate that integration is also part of the model, but it's also, we've noticed, best practices as well. And another key piece of data that has really influenced this has been the number of Ls. In 2012, we had just 20 Ls. Now, in 2016, we have 63 Ls. Okay? So we've just not taken a look at the data, but we've really used that to help us with our day-to-day instruction.
Everything we're doing to become a stronger professional learning community, we still have a number of things.
So just, so you have all hands on deck, grade four, you have less hands available, grade two, is that summarize it accurately? Example, I don't mean to, you know, we had a snow day, so I actually read this a couple of times. Yeah, I was going to come over, but hey. So fourth grade, for example, how many classroom teachers?
We have, we have three this year. Last year, we had four.
Three fourth grade, so how many groups are able to break up?
That's what the all hands on deck.
Right, so how many groups do you end up with?
Right now, we have six.
In second grade, you?
Second grade, we have four, four groups, an ENL group that pulls a group, a reading teacher pulls a group, we have a teaching assistant who pulls another small group. I think we're at seven.
All that to accomplish.
Just one for me. Mention you have common assessments, it says unit, so that's one unit in math, one in ELA, so you don't have core.
That comes from, and there's, yeah, a lot... Saying, make sure that you're...
Hi, Dave. I have a question about the ELL students. You said one of the goals was to have them integrate in with the classroom. Classified as an ELL learner, are they always an ELL learner, or do they... Part of the regular...
The regs have just changed. Proficiency they test them for three minutes, they need to get.
That seven years, if you've had formal education, your home... Take possibly between seven to... Depending on the child's...
I had heard somewhere about the regulations changing for ELLs.
Yes.
And there was some mention about, I just need this explained because I'm not, I'm not... They said something about, like, say you have a child in kindergarten that speaks only Spanish, you know, a fourth grader that speaks only Spanish, can't instruct them together even though they have a common language.
Absolutely. They, that's true. They changed the grade span, so it can only be like a two-grade level grade span. So you could possibly have a kid, a second grader and a third grader in a standalone group, but you can't have a kindergarten student with a fourth grade. Their needs, even though you might think, oh, this kid has, is just learning the alphabet, which I've had in fourth grade, but the content that that child needs to know is not kindergarten, it's fourth grade. So it makes more sense, you can only have, yeah, two at a, two grade level span at one time together.
Even though they're starting from like right at the kindergarten level for English, their content needs to be different in the fourth grade setting.
Yes. Yeah, that particular child would receive, if they're at a kindergarten level in fourth grade, 72 minutes a daily of ENL instruction, which would be half of it, and you would go to the classroom. It has to actually be ELA if you're at a level one or two, it has to be. And then the other half of it, we'd pull them out in a standalone class.
So when you, when you make those groupings together, you would probably, I'm just, I'm just trying to get the practical, how you have to work this out. So if you've got a number of ELL fourth graders, then you would not group them according to like the language, you would group them according to their grade level versus their native language?
Absol-, oh, yeah.
Is that, I'm just trying to, okay.
Absolutely, yeah, we would, I, we always group them by their language proficiency level, regardless of their home language.
Our first priority is to be...
I was sick, I was going around backwards. Okay.
Five or six different languages.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm getting it now. Thank you.
Thank you all, very much.
Avala, shukran.
All right, moving on from comments to the audience, we do not have any comments this evening. So we'll move into board committee reports or comments. Any updates on any policies?
Yep, our, the policy committee met on, a while ago, 19th. We reviewed our policies, three are on tonight's agenda, and one... Hey, one more thing, I just want to congratulate Jackie Owens for her recent, due to the Anadaga Madison School Board. Paul and I attended a dinner last Thursday with Jackie. Voted in by unanimous decision.
Got to listen to the new Regent of New York State Education Department, and when I was sitting there listening to her answer questions from people from the audience, all these board members and superintendents, it was very interesting that, now I realize what I don't know, because there's a whole lot that she has to deal with that I hadn't even thought about yet. So I'm like furiously taking notes, but it was very, it was very interesting to meet a Regent and to see where her concerns lie versus the local level.
The legislative meeting will be next Wednesday at 5:30 on the 14th.
Any other comments?
Just a couple of things. We were reminded a few minutes ago that, yes, we did have a snow day two weeks ago, and we missed a board meeting. So in case anybody out there is wondering, rather than to reschedule the board meeting, we were able to consolidate that board meeting agenda with tonight's. The only change that we needed to make was to push the building planning team, BPT presentation, out, future meeting. I want to, so we're now on the BPT role, and I want to thank both Main Street and Allen Road for starting us out tonight. And I just have to comment, in listening to Allen Road's, and talking about the fact that it's all hands on deck, that really goes along with our mission and with our beliefs that our special ed study group came up with last year in terms of they really are all our students, and we're all responsible for meeting their needs. So pretty exciting to hear, so.
Thank you. Moving into our routine action items, do we need to take any of these separately? Before we move forward, Don, is there anything in the business reports that we need to be made?
Nothing of note.
Okay. Do I have a motion to take A, B, C, D, and E as a group? Paul and Jackie, all in favor? That's unanimous. Moving into discussion action items. Item A is to just make an amendment to our organizational meeting. One of our attorneys changed firms, so that's, we're just making a change to that. Any questions? No, do I have a motion to take A? Mike, Leon, and Scott, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, B, the State Environmental Quality Review Act. It's just, we have to approve a resolution. Sure, Don, go ahead.
So it's required that certain types of things that we do have to have a seeker resolution, and King &amp; King has reviewed the project closely. This is a project that's very similar to what we did at the high school in terms of redoing the entryway to improve security at Gillette Road Middle School, and this project will have no significant impact on the environment, and therefore, it's a type-two seeker resolution, and we're asking the board to approve.
Great, any questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve that resolution? Mike and George, all in favor? Unanimous. We have a couple of tax surcharges this evening. The first one here, tax surcharge with 7992 Brewerton Road. Do I have a motion to take this? Paul, Liz, Connie? Yes? Great. Our next resolution is authorizing an expenditure for an appraisal on Gaylord Brothers Incorporated. Do I have a motion to take this tax surcharge? Liz and Scott? Connie? Yes?
Yes.
Item E is something that's kind of pleasant to have. We have an increase in bullet aid, so we're able to increase our expenditures. This is just another roll call because we are making an amendment to our budget. Do I have a motion to accept this resolution? Mary, George?
Question, just the, the Francisco bullet aid, why do we...
Just how, how it's being spent, it's all musical instruments, but nature of the instruments.
Yes?
Yes.
Item F, we have a recommendation to create a temporary auto body repair worker. Annette, would you be able to just shed some light?
Sure. We needed to come up with a temporary position due to somebody being out for an extended period of time and obviously needing to keep up with the fact that our vehicles and school buses need to be running.
All right, do I have a motion to accept that? Liz, Jackie, all in favor? Item G, we are continuing to get our scoreboard sponsorship contract dollar amounts in. This one's from Fair Rubbish Removal. They've donated their second installment of $3,000 for the North Syracuse Central School District scoreboard sponsorship contract. These funds will go into the special aid fund for that scoreboard. Do I have a motion to accept that gift? Michael, Scott, all in favor? Surplus non-marketable equipment. Don, this is just normal.
Got some great tube TVs on there. Thirty-two inch.
Do I have a motion to accept that surplus? Leon, Jackie, all in favor? All right, unanimous. I'd like to take I and J together. Jackie is, or Mary, is there anything on here of note, or just the regular recommend to re-adopt? Okay? Great. Do I have a motion to accept I and J and renew those policies? Liz, Mary, all in favor? Before we move into personnel, I just want to acknowledge a retirement. Jodi Tantillo is a special education teacher, and she will be retiring with 30 years of service to the school district, so we would like to thank her for all of her work. I don't know if you...
Sure, as a matter of fact, I'd be happy to say something. Jodi and I kind of go way back together. We were teachers together at Allen Road, did a lot of co-teaching back then before. She made a lot of great contributions to the district and to...
Congratulations, and we congratulate her on her retirement. Do we need an executive session before we take personnel reports A, B, and C? Okay, I would like to make a motion to take A, B, and C as a group. Jackie, Mary, all in favor? Unanimous. All right, I would like to make a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of receiving an update on negotiations with the middle managers bargaining unit and the North Syracuse Education Association, to receive an update on two legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment record of six individuals with no action to follow. I'll make the motion, do I have a second? George, all in favor? That's unanimous. All right, thank you, everyone. Anyone here for school can come up. Anyone around the table can sign your forms.